It is 6:35. We're going to commence this Planning Commission meeting of January 22nd. We'll be calling to order. All Commissioners are present with the exception of one vacant seat. Roll call. Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Cardenas, if you could lead us, please.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
Thank you, Commissioner Cardenas. Moving on, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Peroni. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Salazar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Public comments, non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments from the audience? Moving on. Approval of consent agenda. That will be the Planning Commission minutes of October 9, 2017. Have the Commissioners review these.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Peroni.
No second.
Second by Commissioner Salazar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to public hearing. Accessory dwelling units zoning ordinance text amendment. Where staff? Do we take a five-minute break? Okay, let me read what it says here. In the meantime, while staff shows up. The proposed zoning ordinance text amendment will consolidate and streamline regulations applicable to ADUs by amending various zoning definitions related to terminology found in the Callejico Municipal Code related to second units in Chapter 17.3. State law affecting accessory dwelling unit went into effect January 1, 2017, and more recent changes will go in effect on January 1, 2018. The proposed ordinance is necessary in order to designate where ADUs will be permitted throughout Callejico and to establish development standards that conform to recent changes in state law. Presentation by Building Code Enforcement Planning Director Ralph Morales. Please come to the podium.
As was brought out earlier, in 2016, Governor, the Governor signed a Senate Bill 1069 and an Assembly Bill 2299, and then, which amended Section 65, 852.2 to streamline processing and encourage development of ADUs. Some of the changes were to replace the term secondary unit with accessory dwelling units and limit cities' ability to require parking for ADUs and require cities approve with only a building permit certain ADUs built entirely within the existing home or accessory structure. In 2017, Governor Brown signed a SB 229 and AB 494, which again amended Section 65, 852.2, and this was regarding the ability to require parking for ADUs and require setbacks for garage conversion ADUs. This comprehensive update includes the code cleanup, streamlined procedures, and adhered to recent amended state laws. Callejico zoning code has various terminologies and definitions for second units and makes reference to guest dwellings, accessory living quarters, second single-family dwellings, second kitchen dwelling units, and second kitchen granny flats. The proposed code amendments will delete all these terminologies and use a new terminology, which is the accessory dwelling units, or also known as the ADU for all these uses. The proposed zoning text amendment will streamline the procedure for billing an ADU, so destructionary permit and adhering will not be required. And for an ADU that is converted from an existing to legal structure, the project will require billing permit only. And if the project meets certain state law, and that's if the project meets certain state law requirements, all other ADU projects would require a ministerial use permit to be approved by the Director of Development Services and would have to meet the development standard set forth in the newly proposed Section 17.03, 165. Staff has reviewed the project for conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act, which is also known as CEQA, and determined that the activity is exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to Section 21080.17, the Public Resource Code, because of its ordinance regarding second units in the second family or multifamily residence zone, implemented in provisions of Government Code, Section 65, 85.2 and 65, 85.2. This is also inconsistent with the Callejico General Plan, which Staff has reviewed and proposed zoning text amendment, and determined that it is consistent with the Callejico General Plan. So based on the information in the Staff Report, Staff recommends that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and adopt the section resolution recommending that the city, that the City Council find the requested project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, which is CEQA, and to adopt the following ordinance, an ordinance amending Section 17.01.900 definitions and Chapter 17.03 residential zones of the Callejico Municipal Code to revise the city's accessory dwelling unit regulations as required by law. With this, if it is approved, there will be some changes, which means that on, let me see, there was on page six, you will see that there is a placeholder for standards for impact of historical places that will be removed. On page seven, under item 2C, there is a blank for municipal code chapter that would be chapter 17. And on page eight, there's a note at the top that should be removed, which will be done. And on page eight, there is a placeholder for the additional definitions, and that also will be removed.
You mean page five and seven of the chapter 17?
It would be chapter, yeah, be page six, under number 11. There's a part eight, has a placeholder there for standards, so that would be removed.
Okay.
And then on page seven, 2.0C, the chapter number was left blank, and chapter 17 would go in that area. And then on page eight, under the note, that would be removed, which is on top of the page. And then Section C 202, definitions, Section B, that placeholder would also be removed.
Okay, 202, you say it's going to be removed? 202 is going to be removed, Ralph?
202 definitions is going to be removed?
On the definition, let me go back, yeah, 202B.
B.
Where it says, the placeholder add other applicable definitions, that will be removed.
So with that in mind, we're asking that. Hey Ralph, why, when you prepared this, why didn't you just tell us this will be removed? You wait till we're here.
Well, because it was an oversight, I might point, to be quite honest, it was brought to my attention by the City Attorney.
Are you done, Ralph?
I'm done, yes.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the audience, any part of Romero?
Is this microphone working?
It should be.
It should be.
Good evening, my name is Jose Carlos Romero from Proterra Engineering, and I just have a comment to the Commission that we've been approached, Proterra has been approached by different property owners in Las Haciendas, on the west side of town, on Rancho Legante, on the east side of town, and also on Tierra Santa, and Meadows subdivision. And they, they've asked us to prepare some preliminary layouts for accessory dwelling units, if and when this new ordinance passes. And one thing that we noticed is that we would like for you to consider that the setbacks, the rear yard setbacks for the units be established at five feet or less. And that's our only comment right now.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at this moment, and we'll ask the Commissioners for any questions. Mary, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Ms. Peroni?
Yes, I do. Ralph, now, when I see the way the state presents this, they don't exclude any part of town. So now, right here, we're trying to designate where you can build an ADU or where you can't. So, and also, you know, I need that clarified, and when you say standards, what standards, what's the difference between the standards from the state and the standards from the city?
City standards, we go by the most recent building code. Some of the changes that the state puts are the parking, that the municipal code says that if you do a separate dwelling, that you would have to provide the parking, while the state is saying that you don't. But for the most part, the standards that we have is the standards that they would have to meet the building code.
Okay. Isn't it the state that, when you come to City Hall, and people are asking, whatever the codes you use, aren't your codes really set by the state? They're, that's what I'm thinking. All my projects I've brought, we go by the state regulation, state codes. Now, why are we changing their codes? Is it, or explain that to me.
Well, I think what you're thinking is two different things. The, it is true that the, the building code is set, is not set by the state government, it's set by the, the building contractors in the.
But it's regulated by the state?
Which, yes and no.
Okay.
Okay, because for the most part, even though the, let's say that the state sets the, the building code, still, I mean, you have the option of amending the building code. Los Angeles, for example, has their own building code, because they have different standards. I'm not, I think, I don't, I'm not sure what San Diego does, but I know that San Diego amends certain building codes that there are. We don't amend, we go by what the, what the state puts before us, and that's what we're following, that's all. The state, and the code that I'm talking about is a construction code, it's not, is not the municipal code that puts the setbacks on it, which puts the parking requirements on it, or anything like that. The, the building code that is put before us by the state, as you, as you put it, are construction codes, and those are the ones that we can't move away from, because those are health and safety issues.
Okay, but then when you talk about standards, that's when, I go back, the standards, we go by the standards of the state when it comes to construction codes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so why are we?
We're not, we're not deferring or from what the state is saying, the state is not saying that. The state is not saying that you're not going to follow the building code. The state is saying that there are certain things that they're not going to require, and that is more on the municipal code as far as the setbacks that is, that each city will put together. So the state is saying that, for example, parking. Parking, on an ADU, parking would not be required. But if you read the section, why won't it be required in a large, because the state is focusing more on large cities than on small cities? Because in large cities, you don't have the, the space for additional parking. But then, on the other hand, what we do have is public transportation. So it talks about if there is public transportation five, 10 blocks away, then for that reason it's not required. We don't have that problem. Our transportation is almost nonexistent, in the sense that if you want to get public transportation, you have to go almost half a mile, not more. So in that sense, it's different. I know that it's also talking about side and front setbacks, but it's talking about garage conversions, or if you're going to build an ADU on top of an existing garage. And the reason for that, you don't have the space. Lots in large cities are a lot smaller. We don't have that, that problem. We have the luxury of having a lot of land. And the thing that we have to look at is, is that also, even though we, this is allowed and it's being allowed, we also have to look at the community. So for example, if we're too close to our neighbors, then we could have an issue that our neighbors would complain because of being so close to, to property line, and some of the.
Okay, so now that you've defined what you, what you want, what are the setbacks that you're looking for on something like this?
The setbacks on the side would be five feet.
Okay, that's.
Setbacks in the front, yeah, and that, and the setbacks in the front is 20 feet. And that's what, if you look at all your houses, for the most part, except for certain areas, like in the Kennedy Gardens, the setbacks are about 20 to 25 feet. So that won't change, for the most part. The setbacks in the bank, it does say that for new construction, it's 20 feet. But if you're going to do an addition, or you're going to go in and build a, a separate structure in the bank, then you can go as far as 10 feet, you know? So we really are, I mean, we're staying with the same thing that it has there, and for the most part, except for.
I agree with you on that. Now, my last question is, now, you designate, how do you choose where you designate it or not? Like, for example, engineer, Mr. Romero, asked, hey, well, I got customers, or people in Las Haciendas subdivision, and some in Meadows, so.
I don't, I don't think we're designating any areas.
Well, it says right here. In order to designate where ADUs will be permitted.
Where's that?
That's on page two. So the proposed ordinance is necessary in order to designate where ADUs will be permitted throughout Callejico.
It is open for, for the whole city. If we're not, if you look at our guidelines, it doesn't have.
Your agenda, your agenda, your agenda item reads that.
Exactly.
But your staff report says otherwise.
Yeah, I do apologize for that, but it's not in the guidelines. So we're not going to designate an area to where they can and cannot build. So if in Hearthstone, they want, they want to put an ADU, then they can, just like if they want to do it on Second Street, or on Grand Street, whichever. There is no designation on our, in our ordinance where it says that it's going to be.
I think we need to clarify that, and Mrs. Chair, I would.
I believe, I believe that the bill is mainly for R1 zone areas, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, because it talks that the owner needs to live in the, on the property.
Right, on page, on page two, it shows that it must be single family.
We decide to pass it, we're, we're.
Clarify.
We clarify that. That's all the questions I have. No questions?
Ah, several. Sorry. Going on, your staff report, page two, where it says, amend the state law. I need some clarification, it says proposed changes include but are limited to, and then it goes on to 1, 2, 3, allowing uncovered replacements for parking for a garage conversion ADU, exceptions to require parking, exceptions to setbacks for garage conversions to accessory dwelling units. But you're saying the maximum allowable build, it's 1,200 square feet for attached units?
Attached unit, uh-huh.
Oh, well, okay, what if they have, example, a garage enclosure that it's already considered a ADU, or, and then they build an accessory structure in the rear? That will be exceeding your maximum allowed?
Yes.
They're allowed one accessory unit?
Only one per lot.
Yes.
So what if they have, like the example I gave you, a garage enclosure plus a granny flat in the back? Or they decide to build an accessory?
If they have a garage enclosure that's being used as a separate unit, then they have the, the option of converting that into an ADU.
But not to add an additional unit?
Not to add another one, no.
So what's going to happen to those that have that? Are they in violation, or are they going to be grandfathered in?
If.
Because the, your rules.
Well, I was going to say, they're not such.
Your, your rules don't, don't, don't say, you know, you know, we're going to slap them in the hand, and we're going to extra fine them, or ask them to go through a variance procedure, or they're going to be sanctioned to whatever penal code, or whatever municipal code, or nothing. So are those people going to get away with murder? Or are we going to code enforcement and say, hey, no, you have to put sprinkler systems because the law says so?
Well, our, our plan is this, or my plan is this, is that you have two types of garage enclosures. You have the legal, and you have the illegal. The legal garage enclosures are the ones that are usually, for the most part, granny flat. And those are the ones that have a kitchen in there. Those are legal, because, you know, municipal code allows that. Then you have the illegal ones, where they did a garage enclosures in addition, and then after the, the permit was, was, the final approval was given, then they came in behind, behind the back door, and they installed a kitchen. Those are illegal. What's going to happen is, for those that have granny flats, those, because granny flats will no longer be in existence, as, as they brought out in the staff report.
Right.
So those will have the option of converting the granny flat into an ADU. That will become an ADU. So that means that's their ADU that they will have. Now, those that are, that came in and did it illegally, their punishment will be that they're going to have to legalize it, they probably will get cited, and they probably will have to pay the double fees, as they're doing right now. But then, there's nothing to say that they can't come in and, and convert that into an ADU, following the same steps as everybody else, except that their punishment is going to be that instead of paying $500 for, for a billing permit, they're going to end up paying $1,000 for a billing permit. The inspector will go in there, if they illegally enclose the garage without permits, then usually, for the most part, the billing permit, or inspector, could very well make them tear the covering down, so they can see behind the walls, make sure that, that the walls have the, the proper depth of studs in it, it has a proper insulation on it, and, and they meet all the billing code requirements. So are they, are they going to get away with it? No. Are they going to be able to legalize it? Yes. You know, but there is going to be a cost, a cost to it. And, and this is one of the things that's going to help with this new ordinance coming into place, is that now you're going to have all those illegal conversions, those people will come forward, because what do they want to do? They want to legalize it, and they want to be able to freely rent.
They'll bring more value to their property.
And give them value to the property, because the way it is right now, if I'm mistaken, and Mary can, can correct me, is that there is no value to an illegal enclosed garage. The, all of, the bank removes the evaluation of that living area that they have, and so they lose that. And I seen that when I'd gone out to do some code enforcement inspections. So they're going to want to do that. The other thing they're going to want to do, because they will be able to do, is put a separate electrical meter on, on their property. And that's what you want to do, especially in the summertime, because you don't want to be paying somebody else's electric bill. So there's some positive to, to the ADUs, and there's some positive in enforcing the illegal structures.
Okay, because the, your proposed city ordinance doesn't clarify that, nor does it have a section saying those existing will be penalized, or be under whatever new code guidelines, and will pay whatever fines. So there's nothing on the record saying, oh, okay, if you build something prior to this date, your grandfather, or no, you will still fall under the new state guidelines.
No, it doesn't specifically come out and talk about it, but what that, it does say that there has to be permits. It has to go through.
For the, for the new, all the wording that I've read is for the new.
Whether it's new, or converted, or whatever, it has to go through.
It doesn't say for existing or pre-existing.
But though, there's no, no existing ADUs right now. That's the whole thing.
Well, no, but.
So anybody, even if you have a garage, a garage enclosure that's a granny flat, that's got to be converted into an ADU. It has to go through, through the proper process to do that.
So for, okay, so for, for clarification, garage enclosure counts as a ADU?
Garage enclosure, the only way you can use a garage enclosure with a kitchen on it is if it's a granny flat. Otherwise, if you do a garage enclosure, then on a R1 zone, you cannot put a kitchen in there.
But with the new standards, the granny flats no longer exist, it's all considered an ADU.
Then that's when they need to come forward and, and legalize it to be able to have the kitchen. And that's where code enforcement and the building inspector will go out and do an inspection, and if there is an illegal kitchen, that's when they're going to get dinged for having an illegal structure in there. A second kitchen on our one zone without a proper permit makes it an illegal structure.
What if they just built, I'm sorry, what if they just put a hot plate? That is not considered a kitchen?
Yeah, but I don't think, if you want to do an ADU, you want to put a hot plate on it, you're going to want to do a kitchen. And the thing is, I mean, this is talking about the ADUs, and it's talking about what the requirement for an ADU is. It doesn't talk about what's going to have, what if, you know, it doesn't talk about that.
Right.
That is a separate, that is something separate from the ordinance that's here.
Right. Now, are we still going to be doing the same code enforcement guidelines that an annual inspection for all those variances are supposed to be performed to verify that no renter, so, but now this ADUs allow for the owner to rent, so.
In the guidelines, it also talks that an ADU has to be registered. In the guidelines, it also talks that an ADU has to be registered.
The deed, right?
It has to be registered in the deed. So if for whatever reason code enforcement goes, they get a complaint or they go and they visit a structure, then if they do their background check and they find out that it's not registered, that it's not an ADU. It's an illegal structure.
All right.
Because they have to be registered.
Okay. Um, it's also a question regarding the, the one unit is required according to building and construction guidelines here on page four. It says that all of them have to be fire sprinkler if they're detached from the main unit. Is that a separate fee that fire department has to charge? Or is that included within the ADU permit?
Yeah, it would have to go through, through the proper planning and, and plan review as any other one. If it, if it has fire sprinklers, the, the fire department, they're the ones that review the plans. They're the ones that will review it. If there's a fee for that, then they would have to pay for that fee so that it can get properly inspected and it can be properly signed off.
So how much are we looking at roughly for an ADU now, including?
For an ADU, to do an ADU?
Yeah, considering these new changes.
Well, the, the cost as far as the billing permit would probably end up being the same as, as any.
1,500, you said? How much?
Would be the same whatever it runs.
For.
No, I don't think it's.
We don't have, right now, we don't have a, like an estimate of permit fees, how much an ADU would be costing? If I come in, if I come in tomorrow and I say.
On the first footage, it could run anywhere, probably about $1,500 for, for billing permit.
Would that include the fire permit fee? So that would be.
Fire permits are always separate from.
And how much are the fire permit fees?
We've got a fire inspector over there.
You're second.
Put him on the spot. Let's put him on the spot.
What are the fire permit fees?
For, for an ADU? So you're, okay. So you're talking about.
These are only for attached units. If the, if the unit is attached to the main structure, then it doesn't require the fire sprinklers.
If it's attached to, that would be like, if they enclose the garage and they make it a.
It doesn't need to have fire.
But if they build something separate from the main structure, they require.
Yes.
Ayla. Moving on to. Bear with me. Oh, and by the way, why didn't we get a copy of the SB bill?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought.
We just got staff report and your recommendation, but not the bill. And to Google that. I just wanted to make sure you give me the right bill.
Okay.
All right. Um, well, eliminating the parking structure. We will allow to set up additional parking if, within the setbacks, right?
Yes.
And we just changed the corner lots setbacks and all that.
Corner lots, we brought it before you to not allow parking in the rear and that was, and that was turned on.
Is that going to be still implemented or is that going to be amended?
That's still, that can still be utilized as far as parking in the rear is what you're asking, yes.
Uh huh. Okay, so if the lot allows it, it will still be allowed to have that parking in the rear? Okay. That's all. Any other questions? Okay. Um, we'll close the discussion part and do we have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion? Yes, with the modifications on the designation.
For it to say, to read that it's for R1 zoning.
And, you know, the designation, you know, you can do it either on the west side, the east side, citywide.
R1, R1 citywide.
Yeah, but right here, yeah.
Right, the staff report is right.
You may only have the wording, right?
Exactly.
But let's see, what the ordinance says, because that will be what we are adopting, the ordinance.
The ordinance doesn't designate.
No, but the state doesn't give you a designation. This is.
One quick question, Ralph, will that wipe out all the CCNRs and also subdivisions prior to this? We don't have any.
Well, is there any, is there any CCNR that don't allow taken units?
Lots.
You know, that's an interesting question. That, as far as I'm concerned, it would, being that it's a state law. But I guess that would be something that we would have to ask our attorney and see how that works.
We would have to review the individual CCNRs to see what they say.
So that we table the item.
Subdivision, so it's clarification.
Okay.
Yeah, Victoria's Meadows and. Yeah, and then the one on the other side of.
On the north of, on the north of Cove Road.
I have a question, is it out of line right now?
No, go ahead, Carlos.
I just want to know if the five foot rear setback will be considered in your motion? Right now it's 10.
Right now it's 10. And I, and I think there's a section there that does say that five foot setback is allowed. If you tie the, if you tie the, the ADU with the main structure, and it doesn't have to be tied as far with the enclosed structure, it could be.
A breezeway.
A breezeway or a patio, then you can move it back another five feet. So you could become creative because it would be one or the other. If you go five feet back, then you would have to provide some type of a firewall or fire protection on, in, on the rear wall. So then it all depends what you want to do. But in the municipal code, it does allow it for five feet to go back tying the, the ADU with the main structure.
But the state code supersedes the municipal code, so we would have to buy what the state says.
No, municipal code supersedes the state.
But it was the other way around, state before municipal.
No, I think, I think that's.
They can modify, but you know, a lot of the cities are following just how it was written.
Yeah, because of state. So we don't have an answer on the CCNRs on this ordinance? Do we table it till we have a legal answer, respond to Commissioner Salsar's question or?
Well, we would, if the CCNRs don't allow, well, we'd have to review the individual CCNRs to see what they, to see what they say.
So what you recommend, we table it or? On a case by case basis or?
Because the CCNRs are for the entire subdivision tract.
Right. Yes, I, I didn't see anything in the state law that, that deals with the CCNRs. So I think that it would probably, you know, will probably be dealing with the state law in those situations. But I would still want to review each of the CCNRs. So at the time that each individual permit comes up, the staff would be reviewing that.
That would be, that would be where you will decline or approve?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it says there.
That would be one of the factors.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So your motion is?
There's a motion to move?
Okay, motion to move with the R1 zoning designation throughout the city, right?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Gardenas.
And do we also have in Commissioner Peroni's motion, the four changes that staff mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the page six placeholder removed, page seven, chapter 17 added, page eight, the note removed, and page eight, the 202 subsection B removed?
Okay, those were comments by the director of planning. They weren't mine, so.
Right. Are those included in your motion?
They were noted.
Yes.
Okay, and with the corrections as stated by Director Morales and noted by the commissioners for the staff report and the conditions presented by chapter 17. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? Motion carries.
Do we have a resolution number on that?
Well, it would be O1. Yeah, we're making O1.
2018-01.
Okay, moving on to item number three. Tentative subdivision map. 059 330 001, Emauyon. Tentative map subdivision proposes to, the subdivision of 37.9 acres of land in order to create six parcels. Parcels range in size from 2.2 acres to 7.1 acre. The project site is located between Robinson Avenue and Sunset Boulevard on the western future extension of Portico Boulevard on the east adjacent Town Center Industrial Park. The larger site and area can be further described as APN 08 330 001. Presentation by Mr. Morales.
The applicant has submitted in a tentative subdivision map which proposes to subdivide 37.9 acres into six parcels, which are ranging from, in size, from 2.2 acres to 7.1 acres. The site is located within the cannabis overlay zone recently approved by the city council. A negative declaration for the project was completed by city staff and it was also mailed to all the responsible public agencies for a 20-day public review period. We did receive one comment letter, which, excuse me, was received by the IID describing their area of concern with respect to the developer contacting the IID customer project development office to review the expansion of any future IID facilities. The 37.9 acre site is bordered on the south by FedEx and the west by multi-family vacant land to the east by Town Center Industrial Park and at the north by vacant Imperial County ag land. The site is currently zoned industrial. The current zoning is in conformity and consistent with the general plan. Staff has reviewed the proposed tentative subdivision map in order to subdivide approximately 37.9 acres and create a total of six parcels. The project site is located in an area of the city designated for industrial usage. The overall proposed tentative subdivision map is in conformity with the city's general plan, zoning, and subdivision ordinance. The proposed tentative subdivision map, if carried out in accordance to the city's engineering and development centers, may be found in compliance with all applicable city, state, and federal standards. The option available to the commission regarding the tentative map includes the following. Motion to approve the tentative subdivision map with the adoption of the required findings and condition. At this time, it is staff recommendation that the planning commission open the public hearing, allow input from all those that are pro for the project and against the project for the proposed project. It is then recommended that the tentative subdivision map be approved by taking the following action. Motion to adopt planning commission resolution number 2018. Finding that the negative declaration of 2017 was considered for the project. Motion to adopt the applicable findings and conditions under planning commission resolution number 2018. Approving tentative subdivision map number 058 330 001.
At this moment, we're going to open the public hearing. If we have any people in the audience in favor of the project, please step forward. Engineer Romero.
Good evening, my name is Jose Carlos Romero from Proteri Engineering. 444 South 8th Street in Suite D in El Centro. And I'm here to talk to a couple of our client, Emauyon. She's been approached by different potential customers to purchase the land. It was a big piece of land and they shown interest on different sizes of parcels from two acres to seven acres. We tried to accommodate this to suit their, their needs. And we appreciate that you review this project and approve it to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Anybody else? We'll close the public hearing. Okay, we'll bring it to discussion for the commissioners. Any questions? No?
Ralph, you said that IID had mentioned a concern or?
Well, it, it's more of a requirement that once they get the project, they want, they want to be informed of what project they have so that they can work with the developers far as the power that that's going to be.
But as a thing to the city, you know, IID is a separate entity from us. Your recommendation on what you see, because I don't see any problem in somebody wanting to subdivide their land. I think it in some way benefits people that are willing to purchase. So do you see anything that concerns on the city behalf? Now her subdividing her land and doing, you know, the proper process that the city would ask is all in place?
Yes. Yeah, as a matter of fact, you know, I, I think that it would be to the advantage of the city as well to those potential developers that come in that want to develop the land if it's subdivided. Because now it provides something that they can come in and work, work with.
If it provides more options.
Large piece of land and you would have to get a real large developer or company to come in and want to develop the whole land. This way, it opens up for smaller developers or smaller companies to come in and want to utilize the separate parcels.
Okay, now, my other question. On, we're subdividing and the, there's going to be impacts because you're going to have people. So that's all ready for the developer, correct? Because you know, that area is awful. And because the trucks, those 18-wheelers have really destroyed that area. And especially, she rented for many years to truck parking places. So how do we address all that?
Well, we would have to take it one project at a time. And what would happen is that anyone that would come in and wanted to develop the, the, a certain parcel that's there, then there would have to be certain improvements that would have to be done by the developer or the owner of that parcel. So it, right now, we're just dividing. And, but then as, as the interest comes in and as potential developers come in, then we would, it would go back to the project review committee, would go back to the city. And then at the, at that point, conditions will be put upon the, the interested party that wants to develop it. So if part of the street has to be improved, if certain connections have to be provided, then that would be done at that time.
At that time, okay. Well, I don't see any trouble with somebody trying to subdivide their, I think it brings more options. Either people in the cannabis business or any other business.
Yes.
No question.
I have a question. I'm reading your staff report and it says summary and recommendations. Options of any to the commission regarding the tentative map include the following. Number one, motion to approve the tentative map with the substance of required findings and conditions.
Where are they? I don't see any findings and no conditions. Do we not have any? And the resolution?
There was also comments that, that were, um, part of the staff report when it went to the project review committee. There were two of them, they were put in there.
Now, this is gonna to remain the same zoning? We're not gonna change the zoning?
No, the zoning is not changed, it stays as it is, industrial.
Which is industrial?
It's industrial.
And there's no proposed development at this time?
Not at this time, no.
Now, do... Going to your staff report, I am looking at, there is, on the comments attached, there is a page that has no, Exhibit B. Whose is that? Whose comments were these? It says, "A separate water meter size based on estimated consumption shall be installed for every single commercial unit within a multiple-unit building. A single common water meter install service on multiple commercial units will not be allowed." And this is site number two. "Prior to issuance of building permits, a site-specific drainage study shall be conducted by a registered civil engineer and submitted for review and approval by the city and the IID. All retention facilities and drainage improvements shall be provided in accordance with the city's standards and to satisfaction of the city engineer where applicable."
That, that, those comments were from the engineering department?
From engineering department, from Mr. Dale. So, these are part of the resolution of approval?
That, that, yeah, those are conditions.
These are the conditions. Nine and ten. Uh, Romero, are you okay with these?
Yes, yes, I find that's reviewed and discussed.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we were not giving, presenting or reading something that you were not made aware. All right. All right. Okay, uh, do we have a motion on the floor to approve?
This is a public hearing item, so we need to open the public hearing for comments.
Oh, comments. We did open and close already, these are just the commissioners' discussions. All right, okay. So, do we have a motion on the floor to approve resolution for tentative map subdivision? What is the item? Subdivision tentative maps, zero fifty-nine, thirty thirty oh one, for Ms. Maoyon.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Peroni to approve with the, uh, conditions and, conditions and, what was the other word?
And findings.
And findings. As presented by staff. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cardenas, all those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Also again.
And then we also have another resolution, the resolution, um, number Twenty Eighteen dash zero two for the negative declaration.
That's an additional?
Yeah, it is. It's an attachment one. I know, there's lots of exhibits in attachment.
Why can't you list them on the agenda? Confucius? So, we're making two motions. Second motion will be for a approval of negative declaration, you said, Joe?
Yes, of the negative declaration number Twenty Seventeen dash zero two. Yes, under the same item, there's two resolutions. There's the one for the negative declaration, and then the one for the tentative subdivision map.
Do we have a motion on the floor? For approval of the, um, tentative subdivision map?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Peroni. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Salazar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And then, do we also have a motion on the negative declaration?
Where is negative declaration item here?
It's toward the end in attachment one. It would be resolution number Two Thousand Eighteen dash zero two.
Didn't we pass that? That was the first one, he did. The motion was for the first negative declaration.
Okay, so we have both of them?
We have both motions, right? The negative declaration, and then the subdivision, whatever resolution was.
The attachment?
Yeah. Right, um, attachment one and two. Next time should be listed on the agenda item number.
I thought it was.
All right, so we have approved both resolutions. And both were approved, so. Moving on? Thank you, Carlos. Uh, moving on to business items. Street vacation of portion of Burge, and, uh, I missed from my crew. The proposed point zero, I mean, zero point seventeen acre land vacant is a request from the applicant to vacate the city-owned property on the northwest corner of Highway Ninety-Eight and CN Perry intersection. The site area can be further described as APN zero fifty-eight, one seventy-one, zero eighteen, and one seventy-one, zero sixteen. The proposed vacation is exempt from formal environmental review pursuant to Section Fifteen, Zero Sixty-One, B three, and Title Fourteen of the California Code Regulations. Presentation by Mr. Morales.
Yes, um, the city's planning and engineering staff reviewed the past, current, and the expected future use of the point seventeen island, and determined in accordance to Chapter Three of Part Three of Division Nine of the Streets and Highway Code, that the island is no longer necessary for present or pers- prospective, excuse me, public use, and that the vacation would promote economic development in the city while increasing city's tax, property tax base, and development fees. City staff had determined that it would be appropriate to vacate the island and intend to recommend the city council that it do so. There are currently no utility which runs through or under the island as the resolved engineering staff released, releasing the property to a private owner along with a quick claim deed held by the city will not, will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of any person residing or working within the, within or near this area. In addition, abandonment of the island will not cause irregular traffic or circulation patterns that would be contrary to the circulation element of the general plan. City staff reserves the right to ensure that the conditions of approval for the maintenance of the island are written up and agreed upon by all parties.
Okay, so we're going to discuss this. There's an adoption for a resolutions, for a resolution. This time, we're open to discussion for anyone in the public?
This is just a business item, so we don't, unless you, in your discretion, want to, okay.
Good evening, I'm Ed McGru, I'm the owner of this medical complex corner of CN Perry and Birch Street. My residence is six eighty-one Sanderwood in El Centro, California. There's a little story that goes on with this, I'd like to take a moment to share with you. About twelve years ago, when our family purchased this property, and we did a lot split, and it was found that that particular area that is in red there on the map had been the Birch Canal in the old days that brought water down to the school. They actually irrigated the fields with canal water. In any event, so we had to extend Birch Street there, which I did at my expense to give access to those parcels, which has been very satisfactory. This time, we have Allegria Adult Daycare in the upper right-hand corner, El Centro Comedional, El Centro Regional Medical Center in El Centro, or from El Centro there. And then we have a new complex called Birch Street Enterprises that is north and south on the west side. I sold the addition, the adjacent property to Fresenius for the adult, for the dialysis facility. So, we have a very nice complex there. We did all this about ten or twelve years ago, and we had in process to acquire this portion that was in red. And we didn't do it. And the city, uh, changed, you know, it slipped through the cracks, is what it boiled down to. Now, it's become an issue because I wanna put a monument sign for these tenants of mine, and they're all very interested in having that signage. And the porch, the spot to put it on is in the red zone, and I can't put a sign on city property. So, I'm asking you to vacate that so that I can add a sign to designate these businesses that are on the property, that's what it all boils down to. And we maintain, we've maintained for twelve years, very nice landscaping. We do all the landscaping there at our own expense, because we wanted it nice. And there is a retention base in that will be maintained in its present location. And so, there will be no changes to the appearance or anything like that, except for a monument sign that we will be doing in compliance with the codes according, according to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Winker. Carlos, do you have any comments?
Again, my name is Jose Carlos Romero from Proterra, representing Mr. Ed McGru. And the only comment we have is that after, if and when this gets approved, then we're gonna process some, some, a lot merger, so we can include this vacation into the property. It'll increase its size, it'll increase the taxes, property taxes, so we'll just follow through this process. And thank you again.
Thank you, Carlos. Any questions from the commissioners?
Um, my question is, are you asking it to be given back to you? Is that what you? Oh, it never belonged to you, oh, you're saying you were maintaining it and taking care of it? The property, that you were maintaining it and taking care of it for the city, you were saying? You can't hear me?
Yeah, he's been maintaining it.
Oh, okay, I just assumed that you had donated it to the city priorly when you owned it.
No, it's never been.
Okay, you've never been to yours, okay, okay, I just wanna make that clear.
I, I have a couple of concerns. He says he's been maintaining it for twelve years. I've been maintaining it right in front of City Hall for fifty years, and they don't give me anything here. No, I'd like to put cement there, but in any case, that's not my concern. My concern is, you've done a great job, Mr. McGru, and when I was in city council back then, you know, we supported your project. And, you know, a lot of the conditions that were applied to this project, you know, part of it is landscaping. You know, you're on Highway Ninety-Eight. I would say it's our business card as you drive into our city, as you drive out of Heber Avenue. And it looks nice, looks nice. And then, the other issue is, it's a retention basin. It's a, it's a retention basin. So, how do we address that? Are you gonna do a retention basin somewhere in the, in the back?
There is an existing retention basin that will stay in place.
Okay.
We're not gonna make any changes there.
Okay, those were my, my concerns. And, you know, I'd like to continue to see our landscaping there, because it is a focal part of Callexico. And something else. Vacating the land, I, I don't believe in that. You know, everything is economics. You talk about taxes, you talk about putting up a sign, everything is a value-added. So, by what I see, you know, the point seventeen of an acre, you know, give or take, what is it, seven thousand, seven thousand one hundred, you're an engineer, Carlos. So, on commercial value on there, let's, let's look at a value for the, for the city. The, you know, not give away our land. You know, give me my, my front yard over here, give it to me, yeah. No, so, I, I don't believe in that. You know, recently, I tried to get a alley vacated, but I was gonna pay for it. They didn't wanna vacate it, but, you know, we were willing to pay for it at market value. I support it at market value. And it's, it's a plus to your property, and, like you say, it'll be a plus because we'll have more tax roll. But I, I am concerned, Ralph, on, okay, you, you build a monument sign, and, uh, it doesn't say what type of monument sign you're gonna build. So, I would like to see a little more, not just, this is what we wanna do. Because whether they put up a monument sign, the size that they have in Cardenas, that, that's kinda, so, when we, when we're gonna put forward this kind of stuff, you know, we gotta be very clear, and, you know, and put a value. You know, it's not like the city, we're not hurting for a little money. So, it is our, our real estate, it belongs to the city. So, I, I would recommend, first, I would like to see the project of the monument sign. Secondly, I would like to see, uh, the square footage of this. You know, I'm going by what you're giving me here and go to, go to commercial value on a sale. And that's, that's my opinion on this.
If I may, and, and to provide a response as far as the monument sign, this, what we're dealing with right now is a vacation of the, of the property. If and when the, the applicant acquires the, the property, he would have to come before the city before he installs or builds his monument sign. So, the, the, the city giving him or selling him the property doesn't give him the authority or doesn't give him a permit, automatic permit for him to put a monument, monument sign. So, even though he gets, you know, he acquires... a monument sign, so even though he gets, you know, he acquires a property either through purchase or dedication or whatever, the monument sign doesn't come with it. So that in itself is a separate, would be a separate issue, a separate applicant application, so that the planning and engineering and the project review committee would have to review that, and you're right, a monument sign 37 feet or 35 feet would not be, probably not be allowed there.
Exactly. And you know, again, in all new construction, we're always requesting, requiring that people put landscaping, and right here, basically, we're gonna cover a lot of this landscaping, put up, putting up a monument sign. I think we should be, because I saw his site plan, and taking that off, you know, for a sign, you know, takes away a lot of our landscaping, so I think we need to take a look at, because it's a beautiful place, he's done a great job in keeping it up, and you know, now taking part of it off to put up a sign, maybe he can redesign it and put the sign somewhere inside and probably in the, I would say, on the west, northwest corner, you know, following setbacks from the city. But any case, and plus, it has, there's need to be economics, there's, there needs to be a value for us, those two things.
Okay, Carlos.
Carlos Romero from Proterra, we're requesting a vacation because this is a right-of-way, a street right-of-way, it's not a city-owned property, this is owned by the public, and there's a government section that tells you how to deal when you vacate this, this kind of land. So we would like to reconsider the issue on trying to get compensation out of that. If it was a city property, if you had a grand deed, especially for the city, you would have to go through another process of bidding the property, getting real estate valuations, I mean, it'll be another kind of process.
Then I think it should be done, either way, because there's two things here, I see, Carlos. One, and you know, because you're in the business, any new construction is required landscaping. So by vacating this, already giving it to the landowner or the property owner, okay, we're taking away, to put up a monument sign, and I have pretty much an ideal on how much, you know, you have 7,100, 8,000 square feet, you know, there, just to put up that sign, depending, because he wants to do it for the whole center, you're looking at a sign that's gonna take over probably more than half, so after you put foundation, after you put up a third of it.
Yeah, but what, I don't understand, Alex, what's the connection between having to put a sign with disposing of the property as a?
Okay, because they're telling me the plan for the future plans, they need that because they want, he said he wants to put up a sign for his tenants. Am I right or am I wrong?
Well, yeah.
Am I wrong or am I right? That's what I'm telling you.
Yeah, the purpose for, okay, 10 years ago, we submitted the request?
No, no, that's not my question. Is it to put up a sign, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, so it takes away from that property. So I believe it should stay like that, because we need landscaping on property, especially on?
But landscaping is going to remain, the sign?
Yes, but when you put up the sign, it's gonna take a great part of it away.
The sign size, it'll be about the size of this table.
The structure to it.
Yeah, no, yeah, and it's gonna be about 13 feet high, and it's gonna be narrower than this table, and it's just gonna be a small section of the whole property.
Can I explain one thing? You know, more than explaining, we would need to see a little plan, but I think that's not the item on there today, the item is vacating the land, so I think that's, that would be a separate item, but you know, he mentioned it, that's why I'm asking, and when I see somebody's gonna put up a sign, it takes away from what it has, so.
We move vegetation over, there's a rock.
We would need to see a design, I mean, I would, you don't have a design here today, do we?
Thank you, Carlos.
For his sign?
Before we move on?
They haven't come before because they're not ready for a sign, and like I said, we're dealing with two different things here, the vacating and the sign, whether, even though the city was to hand over the property, whether, like I said before, purchase or whatever, that doesn't mean that they automatically get a permit for the sign. They would have to come before the city and show us at that point what type of a sign they're going to be put up, what is the design of the sign that they're going to be, or the structure that they're going to be putting up, because the other thing too, and you are correct, we are looking at the aesthetics of the city, we want to make that area look as attractive as possible. We understand that Mr. McGrew also has a business that he needs to advertise to the public, so by doing that, he also needs to provide it with something that's attractive enough that's going to catch the eye of everybody that's passing through there, and it's gonna make it look nice, and again, as you brought out, that the landscaping is also approved and something that's going to be catching to the eye of everybody and make it look attractive, but at this point, there's no, there's no talk about a sign, I mean, they're saying they want to put one in, but there's no talk about a sign.
Before we move on, I'm looking at the agenda item, and the way it reads is just in new business, that means that we're supposed to just hear your discussion, your report, and briefly maybe get a, an understanding from the applicant, but we cannot discuss it because it's not a public hearing. But I also see, and it concerns me, there's a resolution attached.
Exactly.
And we're wasting the gentleman's time here because we can't act on it because it's not adequately placed on the agenda. This is just for us to get the information as a new item, but it has to be placed under a public hearing in order for us to approve a resolution, or consider anything that you presented to us.
It's a business item.
It's not for discussion, it's not for a public hearing. Yeah, we can discuss it, but we cannot vote on it.
Is that correct?
It doesn't require a public hearing.
A resolution requires a public hearing.
This, the vacation?
It still requires a public hearing as a resolution. That was my understanding per sequence guidance.
Not in this instance, no.
Well, I tend to agree with you, because I've seen it in the past.
Well, we can put it on another agenda as a public hearing.
That's what I was, that's what I was saying, because we're questioning and discussing here, but the way the item was agendized is not proper.
But you know, Mr. Romero brings up a question, and where he says this is not city-owned, so I'd like to get clarification on the land, on?
On the title, who owns the right-of-way.
Exactly, so that would clarify.
Yeah, because my other question with the Highway 98 improvements, we don't know what the setbacks will be, at least I don't, staff will, but we need to see what Caltrans' conditions will be for this type of land abandonment, or if it was even considering their project expansion.
I don't think it's at Caltrans, so.
Well, I mean, we don't know, but also, we need to see who owns those right-of-way, because if it's an IID irrigation canal, IID might still be holding on to those rights.
I think we need clarification there, and also, the public hearing would be the?
Yeah, that would be the best, yeah. Though we can consider those things and hear both sides of the discussion, and be able to question and bring in questions to the applicant from the commissioners. Okay, so, sorry, Mr. Romero, sorry, Mr. McGrew, we're gonna, I guess, table this item for the next regular planning commission meeting, so that we can further discuss and review your item, and maybe at that time you can bring us more information as to your proposed monument, because I do read on the proposed resolution on one of the, whereas the applicant will have some sort of agreement with the city, and I'm interested in looking into that. So with that in mind, we're moving on to informational items from the planning commission.
So are we continuing it to a date certain?
Yes.
To the next?
Yeah, that will be continued for the next regular meeting.
And you did know our concerns, know the proper title?
The deed on that. Okay, item five, planning commission attendance records. Let's acknowledge, we see the attendance roster for 2017, 2018. Any staff comments? Ralph, any changes, any?
The only comment I have is that we're going to be having two scoping meetings, public meetings. We have a project with development of more than 600 homes that are big, that they have come forward, that they are going to be building, so we'll be having a scoping meeting for that on January 29th, and for that development. We're also going to have a scoping meeting for the zoning workshop, or a public meeting for the zoning workshop. We have brought this before you, a while back, rezoning certain areas, and so we're coming back, and it is my understanding that because it was denied at that time, that in order to bring it back, we would have to bring back with a new area connected to it. So we have done that, and on January 30th, we'll be having that zoning workshop. I'll go ahead and make sure that I email all of you and give you the dates of those two meetings, so that you are aware of it.
So we can RSVP?
Yes, please.
You can reserve your spot. Okay, moving on, planning commissioners' comments, do we have any comments from the planning commissioners?
Yes, I heard some rumors, and I don't know if it's true or not, Ralph, maybe you heard it too.
I heard that they were gonna do some kind of a sweep down Callexico, that all garages will have to be opened up at one street corner, they were gonna do a sweep and check if homeowners had illegal garages, is that true? I was, have you heard anything about that?
I don't know. Whoever you heard it from, please give me a call, I'm all for it.
We'll give them the key of Callexico to that volunteer who does that brave job.
Okay, so it's not true, I said I would, I would check in.
Okay, that was my only question.
Mr. Peroni?
No questions.
I have a couple of questions. Just updates on what's going on with the town center project. I keep hearing a lot of nasty rumors in the water hole, that that project has gone kaput. I would like to get an update, not right now, right now.
Yeah, there is some interest in there, I mean, as you know, it went through bankruptcy, and so the bank picked it up, but then there are developers that are looking into it, and there is some interest as far as doing some development there. Everything is on the drawing board right now, but there seems to be some interest in there. We're trying to get the new owners to do some cleanup of the property, and, but things are moving, but they're moving slow, unfortunately.
Okay, what I would like to see perhaps at the next meeting is probably a summary of the projects that you're currently working with, so that we can get an up-to-date as to what is the city working as far as projects. I also like to see what's going on downtown, I know it hasn't, it doesn't interfere with our duties as commissioners, but I constantly receive a lot of complaints that downtown is dirty, it's noisy, it's filthy, and you know, it's the main gate to Mexicali when people cross the border, visitors or your regular community people, and we do have a lot of people complaining that, you know, it's dirty, it smells like feces, urine, what have you, dirty trash cans. If you can pass that over to your public works director.
Yeah, one of the things, code enforcement is being fairly active, and I say fairly only because we lost one of them, but we do have staff that's going downtown, and they're doing two things, they're checking for trash containers, because every business, according, as per the municipal code, they have to have a trash in a recyclable container. That doesn't mean that two businesses can't share the same container, they just need to be registered with Allied Ways or whoever they are, to indicate that they are utilizing a container, that's one of them. The other thing is that the same individual, same staff person is informing the merchants that they, and again, this is as per the municipal code, that they have the responsibility to keep the front as well as the alleys clean, and that means that there's not a whole lot they can do about people urinating in the alley, unfortunately, but at least they can keep it free from trash and sweep it once in a while, and maybe throw some water on the ground, and that should help. Other than that, I don't know what public works is doing as far as that goes. The other thing that we are getting ready to do is that the abandoned building ordinance was approved in December, and right now we're working on trying to get the fees as to what the property owner will be charged, because what happens is, once we identify an abandoned building, then we will inform the owner, and there will be a registration fee, and there will be a maintenance fee, which means that they will have to pay for city crews, which is the police fire, or just the code enforcement to go out there and check and make sure that it's being maintained. There's also going to be some requirements that they're going to have to do as far as covering windows, keeping the building clean, if they have to paint it, on buildings that are standing alone, then they would have to put a fence around it, and hopefully a fence that would cover the building and keep it clean. So we're hoping that within the next couple of meetings, we'll come before the council to get the fees approved, and then code enforcement can go out there and start enforcing. So these are things that is going to help the downtown, we hope, by putting pressure on the absentee owners, and hopefully they'll lower their fees just to keep it occupied versus the fact right now that they're keeping it empty, and for the most part, probably using it as a tax write-off.
Ralph, like for example, does your department work or attend the meetings for the downtown business district?
I don't think there's a downtown district right now, an active one, but if they need information, we'll go out there.
I think it'd be good, and you know, for those people that have the storefronts that aren't being rented, you know, I guess what you should encourage them to do is put the outlets do, or the malls, that they put a ceiling, something on the windows, so it really probably, doesn't look that bad, because they can put different scenes on.
Yes, and that's one of the things that the plan is, is so that they will decorate the windows, so they can see inside and see that it's an empty building, but at least it'll be something attractive that will hopefully promote, you know, business or any of the choppers to come by.
Okay, the other one is, an update as to the temporary sign permits that we were discussing a couple of months back, or probably a year ago, and we never, we were working on workshops on the temporary and permanent sign ordinance, and I don't think we ever hashed that out. If you can just?
Okay, we'll work on that.
Yeah, and the other one was, there's a lot of burned houses, like abandoned burned buildings, those are eyesores throughout the city, and if we can just find out what, I mean, how we can help if there's?
One of the things that we're doing?
Revamp that ordinance, so, I don't know.
Yeah, one of the things that code enforcement and our department is doing regarding that is that we're working very closely with the city attorney. Unfortunately, there is? is a, a method that we can go out there to, to take over these properties, that becomes very expensive, but this other way, what we're doing is, we're going out there, we're doing a report, we're coming before the council, we've already done that on two properties, that we came to, to the city council, and we went ahead and deemed those properties being substandard or a nuisance, the second step that, that's happening is, the city attorney is, has prepared a report and a request to the court system, so that the city can go out there and clean the property and do the demolition, what, once that happens, then the cause to do that will be turned around and put on the property, whether through the tax bill or a lien on the property, one of the two ways, but we're working on two right now, once we get that done, then we're gonna jump, because it's true, there are quite a few properties that are dilapidated, they're gone beyond substandard, and they're dilapidated, so we're, we're targeting those, those areas, but we want to make sure that, we want to get this one off the ground, see how that works, and then we'll go after the other ones.
Okay, well, that's, that's all I have, folks, okay, do we have a motion to adjourn meeting?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Ferroni, seconded by...
Second.
Commissioner Salazar.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned.